Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 27, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the center jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. Today we have with us the Honorable James Long here, sitting by our old standby here, Mr. Mike McMahon, just in case somebody doesn't show up. He's always here. But Mr. Long is President of Gideon's International. You always want to know where those Bibles come from in those hotel rooms? That's him. He's out doing all of that. So, Mr. Long, would you please come up here and give us the invocation?
Please pray with me. Father God, we pray this morning with humble praise and thanks. Thank you for who you are and for loving us first. Father, we give you thanks that we're Americans, that we're Texans, and you have placed each of us in Hood County, a place we call home. Thank you, Lord, that in this place we are free to give you praise, to call upon your name and ask for your blessings. Humbly this morning, we pray for our country, our state, our county, and a special prayer for each of our elected leaders in every governmental position. We pray, Lord, that each one of them would come before you and ask for wisdom, for courage, and for understanding, so that they may make the just decisions in all matters of governance. Father, lead, guide, and direct our paths, that we may be of service to our fellow man. We ask you now that you would lead, guide, and direct us, God, that when you're through with us in this life, that you would take us home to be with you. These things we pray, in our Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Now, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call me a pledge of allegiance to Texas.
Our intention is that I pledge allegiance to CD, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Now, let me remind everybody today that if you want to speak on any agenda item, you must fill out a public participation form, hand it to Sheriff Deeds. Sheriff Deeds will give it to Katie Lang, and Ms. Lang will then number it and hand it to me. And if you do not have the public participation form filled out before the agenda item is called, you will lose your turn and not be allowed to speak on the items. So, please, if you want to speak on anything, please prepare the public participation form. Now, our next item of business is the special presentations, and we have today. The first one is the proclamation declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Please, come on up here. We've got a whole bunch of ladies up here. Why don't y'all all come up here and do this presentation? How are y'all doing today? Please introduce yourselves first.
Doing well, thank you so much. And thank you all for letting us be here, commissioners. My name is Shelley Muncie. I'm the Shelter Program Director for Mission Granbury.
And I'm Rebecca Freeman. I'm the Shelter Case Manager.
Good. Tell us what you have today.
Okay. What we have today is, because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, typically we put things out on the square. Not only do we have the proclamation, but we have a new event that we're actually going to be doing. It is called Light in the Window, and what we're asking is that the community comes together and puts a purple light on their porch light or puts a candle in their window, signifying that they want an end, to see an end to domestic violence. This is an awareness campaign that we're doing, and it brings solidarity towards ending domestic violence altogether. That is what we'd like to do. And so, we actually have this, with Rebecca showing the structure here, that we'd like to put on the square where we put our eight-foot ribbon every year. The structure is actually a window that is going to be on a base, and it's got a candle in the bottom of it, if you can see that. I tried to blow it up so that you guys could see it and have a good idea. And so, it's a window that's going to have plexiglass or no glass at all. But again, it's going to be on a sound foundation, so that it won't fall over, anything like that. If the wind gets kind of crazy, like it did in April, it'll stand still, and it's going to have these words on it as well.
Words for us?
Yes, yes. And it talks about, so the community, when they see this on the square, October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Light in the Window Community Campaign Against Domestic Violence, and join Mission Granbury in October by placing a purple LED candle in your window or by replacing your porch light bulb with a purple light bulb to symbolize the community's support to end domestic violence and create a safer community for everyone. If you're a victim, because Mission Granbury, we've got a 24-hour hotline. A victim can call us for help on our crisis hotline. So, again, it's to bring awareness to the community that domestic violence is here in our community. It continues. And again, just as a community, I want, we'd like to see everybody come together and recognize that and be a part of it.
Okay. Well, good. That's a very important deal, and I have a proclamation here. Would you like to read this proclamation?
Absolutely. Okay.
Okay. Do you have a copy of it there?
I do. I do.
Okay. Why don't you read that proclamation?
Thank you. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign to support National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims, and whereas, on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than 10 million people who experience domestic violence annually. One in four women and one in nine men experience severe intimate partner violence sometime in their lifetime, and whereas, on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Mission Granbury received and responded to 531 calls last year. The need for safe housing continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need, and whereas, Mission Granbury provides a safe haven, shelter for women and children who are victims of domestic violence. For victims that are not seeking shelter, Mission Granbury's non-residential program provides victims with safety planning, counseling, case management, and resources. In fiscal year 2022, Mission Granbury's Family Violence Program provided residential, non-residential services to 139 women, seven men, and 68 children. And whereas preventing domestic violence means changing the social norms that allow and condone violence and requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each wholeheartedly committed to transforming our community, now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact it has in our community.
All right.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is a very important issue, and I'm glad that you've brought it to everybody's attention, and it's something that every organization and every citizen of Hood County and all over the nation should be aware of. So, thank y'all very much for what you are doing.
Thank you.
You want to take a photo op? I'll turn around and show your signs and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I get one more?
Thank you. Oh. Thank you.
I've got, did y'all all sign their proclamations?
Yes. I think Dave's got it. It's the one behind that one.
I'll give y'all the pretty one here, so that y'all can frame it and keep one signed. If you, I'm going to let them have the pretty one, and here's one that's fully signed for you, Ms. Lang, okay? Is that, done all right? Everybody square? Okay. All right. Then the next item, the next presentation is the presentation at the LEC Building Assessment by AGCM, and we have here, thank you, sir. Come here and introduce yourself and tell us what you got. You've got us a nice little catalog here.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Judge.
We've read it. We've had two minutes, and we've all read it, cover to cover here.
All right. Well, good morning, Judge, commissioners. I thank y'all for having me this morning. There is a lot of information to cover in here, so I'm going to try to hit the high points, and I know you'll need some time to digest it as well, so I don't expect everyone to digest it here on the spot. So, I'll try to walk you through briefly the process. My name is Ryan Roseborough. I'm with AGCM. We were brought on board by Hood County and charged with basically going into the existing facility and preparing a facility condition assessment, an FCA. The process with which we approached that is we brought in our own internal team, which was comprised of a gentleman named Paul Coleman, who's a registered architect that works for us. We brought in a gentleman named John Nusch, who is a licensed electrician that works for us, a gentleman named Dan Haupt to look at the HVAC system. And then we brought in Sean Spires, one of our PMs, who is kind of leading the charge with our team. And then we also brought in, under us, a licensed plumbing company, Mesquite Plumbing. We had heard some concerns about the plumbing on this facility, and we don't have the tools to be able to adequately scope the plumbing lines, so we brought in Mesquite Plumbing to assist us with running some cameras and giving an assessment from their point of view on the condition of the plumbing system. So, that was the team that came out to the site, made a couple of, two or three trips out to the site, where we met with the end users, the staff. We met with the sheriff. We met with your maintenance team to not only, to not only get some background on what we were observing, but what they had observed from their life of maintaining the facility and some of their inter familiarity with the facility. So, after the visits were done, we compiled kind of all of our results, and we graded the facility's components based on a one-to-five system. So, the individual components were graded according to a one, if they're in very poor shape, disrepair, and in dire need of replacement, all the way up to a five, five being brand-new, works fine, doesn't have any issues. So, we graded all the components of the building according to that chart, whether it be plumbing, HVAC, electrical, structural. The items that graded out as a one or a two, which means in either immediate need of repair, a life safety item, or at the end of its life. If it graded as a one or a two, we sent those items back to our estimating team in-house. Our estimating team then, which is five different estimators, all specialized in different disciplines, they then ran the quantities and the numbers on those items that would need replacement to tell you what it would cost to replace those items. So, the end result of all of that is basically giving you a facility condition assessment on the different components of the building and what it would cost, potentially, to replace all those items in the building that are in disrepair. So, that was kind of the process. If anybody has any questions about that, before I kind of dive into the good stuff here. See if I can make this work. All right. So, as I said, I'll try to run through the high points, the executive summary, as we go through this. At the very back of the appendix, you'll find all the backup information on the cost estimate, and you'll also find the report from Mesquite Plumbing. We also do have video of all of the plumbing lines that were scoped, but obviously, there was no way to put video into the printed report. So, Glenn, we can upload those wherever you all please. So, with that, we have just an executive summary on the building. Of course, the building was built in 1995. We have about 57,000 square feet of roofline that we took off from satellite images. We have about 54,000 square feet of foundation that we took off from plans, from existing plans. So, we didn't have a lot of the as-built plans, as-builts being as the building was actually constructed. So, we only had bits and pieces of plans to pull off of. So, a lot of what we had to do was based on assumption and what we could observe either from old plans or from satellite. So, the site's approximately two acres.
You gave me two different numbers. Just explain the difference between 57,000 square feet and 54,000?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, the 57,000 is based on the roofline, based on satellite. So, that would include things like covered porches and things like that. The 54,000 square feet is based on conditioned space, what we estimated to be conditioned space based on the plans that we had.
Okay. Thanks.
So, as we kind of run through here a little bit, I'm going to look at my paper copy, because my eyes are actually not that good to see that far, sadly. So, we started off with the exterior of the building, walking the exterior of the building. What we were looking for on the exterior, the main issues that we found on the exterior of the building is major issues with the exterior walls. The exterior walls of this facility are in pretty bad disrepair. You'll see a few photos in the very back of the appendix, which we'll get to shortly. There was cracking evident on many of the exterior walls. The biggest issue was vapor transmission. So, those CMU exterior walls are what we call single-wide. They're just basically one CMU block wide, grout-filled, but we didn't see any evidence of vapor barrier or moisture barrier on the exterior walls. So, the problem with that is, when you walk through the interior of the building, you feel humidity everywhere. Humidity is rampant in that building, which is leading to decline in the building as a whole. A lot of that moisture in the building is coming, we think, from the exterior walls, because there's no, there's no mitigating of the vapor transmission. Basically, the vapor's coming straight through the exterior wall into the building. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the HVAC section as well. Exterior windows, again, I'm really only going to hit on the things that graded a one or a two, which is poor or in need of repair. So, the exterior walls were very poor. The exterior windows, a lot of cracking in the glazing. They were also very old, outdated windows, not energy efficient, so those are in need of replacement in the near future. As we walked around the exterior of the building, we were also looking at the site conditions. So, site specifically, things like site drainage, asphalt, those kind of things. Your parking lots, we saw that there was a lot of signs of failure throughout the parking lots, extensive cracking, potholing, what we call alligator cracks, which are all basically signs of base failure, some kind of subgrade failure. So, the parking lots were in very bad shape, in need of repair in the very near future. Sidewalks, same thing. Some sidewalks were in pretty bad shape. Some were in just okay shape. So, we identified those that were in poor shape and put a number to those. Let's see. We had fencing and landscaping. Of course, landscaping is in very bad shape. Granted, that's more of an aesthetic to a point, but we also had some fencing that was missing around the site, so some of that graded out as a one as well. Some of the exterior fencing that was existing was fine, but there was fencing, as I said, missing. So, we ran numbers on that. Your utilities around the building, again, the big thing with the utilities that we found was actually your main roof drains that come off the building run through your main electrical and IT rooms in the building. So, the one place you do not want water to go, electrical and IT, your roof drains are running through those rooms. So, we recommend that those be rerouted to the exterior of the building, not through the middle of the building. As we continued around the exterior and moved around into the interior of the building, we started looking at the structural. Again, we're not structural engineers, so we were only observing what we could see without doing any destructive testing. But we definitely observed several areas where the foundation is heaving. There's evidence that there's leakage under the slab from perhaps the plumbing that's causing that heaving, or it could be from the poor site drainage we saw around the site, where water is draining under the building and causing some of that heaving. So, again, we talked a little bit about the CMU cells on the exterior of the building, which were also cracking, could be signs of structural issues. Also, on the foundation itself in the building, if you walk through and you look down at the slab, we talked about vapor transmission on the exterior walls, much the same on the slab. You can tell where the vapor is just coming straight up through the slab, which is causing not only heaving potentially in the slab, but it's causing failure of the flooring material. All your flooring material's coming up, delaminating, and it's contributing to the high humidity in the space. Humidity was, is a constant theme you're going to hear. We just, we ran into it over and over, humidity issues. Moving over to interior construction, we had several interior doors, frames, hardware that was showing end of its life cycle. So, we did identify those and ran some numbers on some of that. That included access control. The access control in the building is somewhat outdated, and some of the detention hardware appeared outdated. So, we ran numbers on that as well. Interior specialties, we'll talk a little bit more when we get to the HVAC section as well. But interior specialties are going to be things like your kitchen hoods, your sinks, some of those different things, floor sinks, things like that that were in poor shape, which, again, we'll get into those a little bit in the HVAC section. The exterior stairs, those stairs for the roof access did not meet code, so we plugged in some numbers to upgrade those stairs, so that they are code compliant. Don't want, life safety issues were something that we automatically triggered as a need for replacement. Again, moving into the interior finishes section, interior walls and finishes, we talked about the moisture issues already. Moisture just everywhere in the building, contributing to the degradation of those interior walls. Floor finishes, we talked about, those are delaminating due to the humidity issues. We feel it's due to the humidity issues. And then interior ceiling finishes. As I said, some of the things we have in this report are not necessarily deficiencies from a function, from a building standpoint or a failure standpoint. Some of them are functional issues. So, in the case of this building, the ceilings are too low throughout, and that was a common complaint we heard in all of our visits, was the low heights of the ceilings, which contribute to safety issues in the facility and, you know, potential for hazards from the inmates trying to get up into the ceilings. So, we plugged in numbers to raise the ceilings throughout the whole facility to alleviate that concern. Let's see. We'll talk about the plumbing next. Of course, the big picture from the plumbing was they found basically evidence, again, of negative drainage throughout the building, meaning that water's not running the right way through the drains in gravity. It's backing up into the building. When we scoped the plumbing lines, we found buildup throughout the lines all over the place, which you'll see on the videos when we send those to you. So, the long story short was from the plumbing inspector, he felt like the plumbing had met the end of its life cycle, underground especially. As you look above ground, if you walk into any of the plumbing chases out there, you'll see cast iron vent piping that is rusted all to heck. And again, that's a result of humidity in the building, humidity everywhere. So, it's rusting those vent pipes out. We also scoped a lot of the vent pipes, found cracking in the vent pipes throughout the building. The cracking in those vent pipes leads to sewer gas into the building. So, significant issues there. And then, as we moved over into mechanical HVAC, gosh, you're going to see a hole right up there. Our HVAC guy had a lot to say about this building. I will say that your maintenance staff has done a fantastic job managing what they have out there. But at the end of the day, the system's old. The units are not operating as intended. If you walk through the building and look, a lot of the inmates, you know, they'll put things, because the ceilings are low, they can actually put things up on the registers to divert the flow. You know, it's cold, so they climb up and they cover up the vent. Well, when they cover up the vent, that causes a chain reaction through the rest of the HVAC system, causes motors to burn out, causes all kinds of bad things to happen. So, the building as a whole, there were several units that were new, which we took into account, but we priced all the units that were old, outdated, and included a repair for those, also test and balance. I talked about the vapor transmission through the walls and the slab. That's caused because you have negative pressure in the building. So, anytime you have negative pressure in the building, it's sucking in air from outside. So, every time a door opens, you're sucking in humidity. Even with those walls not having vapor transmit, or vapor retardant on them, you're sucking in moisture through those walls. So, you have a negative condition in the building. That whole building needs to be rebalanced once you get new equipment to make sure it has positive pressure. Let's see. We also talked about the control system, recommending that you have a new control system installed on the whole thing, soup to nuts. A control system will alert you if, you know, if, for example, one of the units is not putting out adequate airflow, it'll send you a message and say, hey, we have a problem with this unit. That way, somebody knows to go check it. And it'll also allow you to control the energy efficiency better in the building, if you have a control system. And it's part of code requirement now for the energy code. So, those were the major issues with the HVAC. There's a lot more verbiage in there, but I'm just hitting the high points. Moving over to fire protection, the fire alarm panel was replaced a couple of years ago, but it does not appear to have the audible announcement requirements, which are per code. You have to have, those fire alarm systems have to give an audible announcement now. So, we included a cost in here to upgrade that fire alarm panel to meet current code requirement. All right. Electrical, we kind of had a whole cornucopia of things in the electrical. Some was good, some was bad. Again, we found a lot of moisture intrusion into the electrical panels throughout the building just a result of the high humidity. So, we went into all the mechanical and plumbing chases in each of the areas. We looked at, we looked at what you had available. You did have adequate space in a lot of your breakers, so that was good. There's room for upgrades and improvements. But again, that was a lot of indication Again, we found a lot of moisture intrusion into the electrical panels throughout the building, just a result of the high humidity. So we went into all the mechanical and plumbing chases in each of the areas. We looked at, we looked at what you had available, you did have adequate space in a lot of your breakers, so that was good, there's room for upgrades and improvements. But again, that was a lot of indication of degradation and moisture and humidity issues in a lot of those panels that need to be cleaned up. Would also recommend you come in and do what they call a heat, or a, a camera test on the panels where you look for hot spots. And that'll help you identify if there's anything arcing or anything that's hot, so that you can directly address it. Maintenance did not have any issues that they reported to us with circuits tripping and, you know, excessively or anything like that, so that was all, that was all positive. We moved over to lighting, everything's been recently upgraded with LED, so you're good on the lighting, so that was, that was nice to see. And then we walked over to power receptacles and switches. Again, just a lot of them are showing age and deterioration from the condition of the humidity in the building. So we priced, we priced a lot of replacement in there for outlets, light switches, rewiring, that sort of thing. And then lastly, we move over to, to the communications section and security section. We had recommended within the communications and security, that the security cameras all be upgraded, again, just due to age, they're outdated, this is a super secure facility, and if there's one thing, you, you probably need current and up to date, it's those security cameras. And, and IT room as well, lots of humidity issues in the IT room, gosh, that IT equipment is so sensitive, we really would recommend having a dedicated conditioned IT room, so that you can keep humidity out of that space. And IT is probably shaking their head, yeah, that's, that's an issue. So, so we priced some upgrades there. So with all that, talk briefly on costs now of all of those upgrades. So as you flip through these pages that we just reviewed, you'll see a dollar cost associated with each of those items. That is in today's numbers, okay, those are in what we felt was today's cost. So when we move to the summary of recommendations, which is page 13, in the summary of recommendations, what we did was we took those numbers that we felt like in today's cost, and we escalated them forward a little over a year. Our thought process was, if you decided to move forward with replacing and repairing some of this, it's gonna take you 10 to 12 months to get a design together, to figure out a plan. If we do repair this facility, what do we do with the inmates? We can't work around them with some of this stuff, you would have to vacate portions of the building. So there would be some phasing plans that need to be done. But all that said, we wanted to look, we wanted to project out not just what it costs today, but what would it cost in a year? So these numbers that you see in the summary of recommendation are each one of those different areas that we estimated and assessed, and what we felt like it would cost in a year. So if you flip to, again, we provide summaries there up to page 16, of kind of this executive summary of what those upgrades look like and replacements look like. On page 17, starting on page 17, you'll see there just a handful of photos that we plugged in, we've got lots and lots more photos, but we just plugged in the ones in the report that we felt like would give a good picture of some of the, some of the issues. So for example, if you go to page 18, on page 18, you'll see the outside air dampers closed on photo number seven. Again, I'm talking a lot about humidity, but that's, those outside air dampers being closed means somebody has attempted to control the humidity in the building, and they're doing the best with what they have, but it's just not enough. They've closed the outside air to keep humidity from coming in, and it's not even making a dent. Let's see, if we move over to, let's see, page 21, 21 will show you a lot of those exterior issues we were talking about with the exterior wall buckling and the cracking, and let me move, yeah, there you go, thank you. You'll see those photos there of the cracking and the buckling, there are some areas where we felt like if you just pushed on that wall, you weren't sure what was gonna happen. There was also a lot of concern about when the building was originally constructed, what's actually inside those walls? Again, all of our observations were non-destructive, but are those walls secured with grout-filled CMU? Are they solid grout-filled CMU? Do they have rebar in them? Do they have reinforcing? There was some anecdotal evidence to suggest that there was not adequate reinforcing in those exterior walls, based on some repairs that had previously been done and some observations made. So really concerned about the condition of those exterior walls. And then on page 22, again, you'll just see some of that exterior paving, we were fortunate to be out here after a rain had happened, and so there were birdbaths, what we call birdbaths, ponding throughout the parking lot, which only makes the degradation worse. It compounds, you know, standing water compounds the, the degradation of the asphalt. If you move over to 24, again, you'll see, you'll see photo number 25, you'll see that roof drain running through the electrical room on photo 25. That's a, that's a lot of water that comes through those roof drains, and you've got electrical panels in there, you've got your, some of your IT components in there, so that's where we recommended rerouting those away, getting those out of the building instead of right through the heart of that building. And then you see that, right above at 23, you'll see the communications, that communications closet, which is just out there with all the other electrical stuff, not humidity controlled, doesn't have its own, most IT rooms will have their own dedicated AC unit to make sure that moisture is driven out. If we move over to page 25, again, you'll just see the, the M-word there on page 20, on number 27, again, just evidence of, of previous mold, which is all driven, again, it's humidity, it's all humidity driven. And then 28, you'll see again, a little bit of a possibility of structural cracking there on the interior of the building, which is from that perceived heaving in the slab. Okay? If we, if we move over to appendix A, so appendix A is the cost estimate backup. So this cost estimate backup will tell you everything that went into those numbers that we just reviewed earlier from a high level. So, and here, you can break it down by how many square feet we assumed of this, and how many square feet of that, how many units, mechanical units here, how many, you know, kitchen hoods there. So this has all the breakdown, and there's a lot of numbers in here, and I'm not even gonna run through half of them, but I will run through the executive summary for you. So this recap, page two of 20, takes everything that we assessed that was a one or a two, which is poor or in need of replacement, and says, this is what we think it would cost in today's dollars, which is the total construction cost, the first column. Then we include escalation in the second column, and then we include the soft costs on top of that, because we wanted to give you a total project cost, not just construction cost. Because remember, in addition to construction, you're gonna have design, you're gonna have potentially consultant fees for miscellaneous consultants, jail consultants, food service consultants, whatever that may be. And then we included some owner's contingency in there for FFNE, because this would be a, a repair, you don't know what you're gonna find. And we don't have very good ASB builds. So as we get into the building, we know there's gonna be some things that nobody could see without destructive testing. So when we add all those up, that farthest right column then gives you a total projected cost, projected out for the third quarter, fourth quarter of 2023. And if we replaced all the ones or twos, we feel like that would be about 25 and a half million dollars. And that's not including some of the intangibles, which really, really, I don't even have a way to wrap my mind around, which again, goes to the inmates. What do you do with them while you replace some of this stuff? When we talk about plumbing repairs under the building and plumbing replacement under the building, that takes entire plumbing chases out of commission, and you have to move the inmates somewhere while that's being done. And so how do you do that? So that does not include some of those costs, because we didn't even know how to begin to price that. So, sorry, I'll take a breath, I've been standing up here talking, but, but that's, you know, where we wanted to, to lead you to, was that ultimate number of 25 and a half million, of where we think it stands, based on what we observed. And with that, I would love to open it up to questions.
Hi, I just wanna make sure, clear on the square footage, just trying to figure out what cost would be at 25 million, is that 25 million for the 54,000 square feet?
Yes, sir.
Not, not the 70, it's for the foundation?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And that, that 57 also included the, the maintenance shack.
Okay.
Which is, oh, excuse me, which is on the site, but it's not part of the building. So the 54,000 and some change is the building itself.
Okay.
Sorry, microphone, I'm not mad at you. All right. And as I said, as you go into the backup on this, we have much more detail in there about, you know, what did we, what were the takeoffs we did for demolition of flooring, and what were the takeoffs we did for gyp, gyp ceilings, and all those things were kind of individually taken off as we walked through the space. As best as we could, being that there were some folks in there that we didn't wanna tangle with too much.
Unfortunately, this is what all of us kinda suspected here, after talking to Mr. Jay Riley, and knowing that he keeps a man there almost 24 hours a day, and Eric Turbleville there, and the sheriff, so.
Well, as I said, I think, we were impressed that, with what you're working with, with the condition of the building, that it's being held together. So somebody's working very hard to make things work, but you can only do so much with what you have. So, yeah, as I said, glad to answer any specific questions.
And like you're saying, I mean, the time you have to design it and get it built, you're probably talking about three years, right? Do the design work and then get it constructed, you're talking about three years, you gotta do something with the inmates in the meantime, because...
Yes, sir, that, that's really the driver to how long it would take, is how do you phase it? If, if you could have the run of the entire building, you could get the repairs done and probably, you know, you could get design done in 10 months probably, and have repairs done in two years, out the door. But that would mean vacating the facility entirely, which we think is probably not possible. So then you're having to phase with the inmates, which just adds to your, your, your schedule and complexity.
And that's something that this report does not address, is the cost of housing the inmates while that's done.
That's correct, yes, sir. If, if there's some discussions that happen post this meeting, to talk about what that would look like and how they would be phased, we could certainly provide updated numbers to reflect, to include that, but at this time, we just had no idea.
Well, I think this is something that we're gonna have to get with and study this, and then get back with you and talk about additional plans and what else we're gonna do.
Of course.
So this is certainly not the end, this is just the beginning. So, does anybody have any questions they wish to ask at this time?
You know, I'd be afraid to ask, you might, price might go up.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's what's happening in the market right now. Nothing has any signs of going down. Even though we're seeing some breaks in material, we're blessed in Texas that our economy is so robust and everybody wants to move here, that while we're getting some breaks on materials, our labor costs are just continuing to climb, because you can't find folks to come in and do the work, so.
Okay. Well, Ryan, thank you very much for your report, it's very thorough, thank you, you do a good job, and we, of course, will be getting back with you, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I look forward to any follow-up questions you may have, please feel free to reach out to me.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, the next agenda item is service awards. We got Ms. Welburn here, we got Brian Strickland.
The first two employees are not able to attend this morning, so we only have one here, and it's Frank Hackett.
We all seen this guy around here, haven't we, Sheriff?
Yep. Frank's our do everything guy, but he's always out on the road chasing down dogs, cats, cows, horses, you name it, he's out there, he's Kelly's go-to person to get out there on the road, so, been with us 15 years.
Yeah, I just started my 16th.
I've known him for a lot longer than that with the fire department, so he's a good man, and he'll turn around.
Yes, sir.
Get your picture taken. Here's that for you.
Be sure about getting your picture taken, Franklin, you, you've outlived all those warrants, anyway. All right. That's good. Congratulations. So the other people were Brian Strickland for five years, and Rainier Cromwell for 15 years, so they're not present today, but we'll see that they get their awards. So the next item then is, don't forget, if you had any public participation forms, get them to us before the items are called. So the next is the consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda, or have any questions about anything on the consent agenda, or do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hey, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four to zero. Next, we have road operations, but no road operations, Mr. Donald Denny, okay? So that brings Mr. Clint Head with development.
Morning, Judge, morning.
Mr. Head, how are you doing?
Good, morning, morning, commissioners. The first item we have today is, we accepted applications for two replats, and development would like to set the public hearing for the replat of Indian Harbor Phase 3, Lot 42R in Precinct 1, and Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 407R in Precinct 4. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for these replats for the November 8th, Commissioners' Court.
Okay, November the 8th, okay. Do you hear a motion to set these public hearings for November the 8th of 2022?
Yes, sir, Judge, I make a motion to set public hearings for Indian Harbor Phase 3, Lot 42R, and Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 407R for November 8th, 2022.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to set public hearings for the replats for November the 8th, 2022, for Indian Harbor Phase 3, and Bentwater on the Lake Granbury, Section, Section 3. And second by Commissioner Eagle, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four, zero.
Next item we have is a final plat of Oakwater Ranch, Lots 4, 5, and 6, in Block B, it's in Precinct 2.
Okay, we have a number of people that wanna speak on that, let me see about this. Okay, I have Lisa Bordeaux, let me go ahead and get these public comments for Lisa Bordeaux, and then next would be Carolyn Reeves, and then next, after that, would be Courtney Blackman. So just, y'all are next up after we get through. Ms. Bordeaux, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Yes, it all goes to the Commissioners.
Pull the microphone closer to you, so everybody can hear, please.
Sure, is that better?
Yes.
I lost a few minutes on that, I'm sorry. My name's Lisa Bordeaux, and I represent the Comanche Peak Coalition, our agenda item is the plat that was just raised by Clint. And we appeared at this court last hearing to discuss another plat that was filed, so when this plat came about, we wanted to come talk to you again today. We reminded the court at that time that the Upper Trinity Groundwater District had recommended that Hood County revise their regulations for private wells to five acre lots. We also expressed concerns regarding traffic on the roads, maintenance of the roads, and the potential rose, road hazards of construction traffic on the windy road, if, everybody knows, if anybody's been on UI Road, it's very windy. We had asked the court to preserve the integrity of the Comanche Peak area horse property, and that, that they require developments to contain five acres at a minimum. And that would also be consistent with oak country estates, which are four or greater And whether this court is aware or not, there are restrictive covenants that this property owner filed for Oakwater Ranch, and it contemplates an additional 30-something lots, for a total of 61 lots. There's been no development plan, I don't see anything addressing road issues or road hazards, and this is a big concern for us out in this community. Here's another example, restrictions provide that two horses are allowed and other outbuildings. Well, if anybody here has had horses, a grazing standard is one acre per horse, a two acre lot with a 2,500 square foot residence does not allow enough acreage for a horse to graze, let alone an outbuilding. So we, we specifically are motioning this court to deny the proposed final plat of Oakwater Ranch, Lots 4, 5, and 6 in Block B. I will note that on Lot 6, proposed Lot 6, there already exists a residence, so it would make sense, given the area and the current developments out there, which are none, that this could be replatted to a six acre lot, to preserve, again, the horse community, the groundwater, our roads. Your facilities do a great job keeping up, but our traffic has increased exponentially just with all the development going off on 144. So just having three more homes there is gonna change traffic. And I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but the plat that was filed originally by this developer contemplated 22 lots, two acre lots. And so this ties to this nether plat that this gentleman is filing, or proposing to file, because again, it talks about groundwater concerns, it takes us to road water concerns, road concerns, construction concerns, and, and the integrity of preserving the Comanche Peak area. And I guess, I'm gonna point this out now, but the original plat that was filed for the 22 lots wasn't even filed by the property owner. So I think, in addition to asking the court to deny this current proposed final plat, I really feel like y'all need to revisit the other plat, because the owner that owned the property is not the same entity that filed that plat, and I think that gives us an opportunity to revisit it as well. And I gave the paperwork to the sheriff to give to you, just showing the entity ownership and the incorrect filed plat, that would be the last page, Mr. Cotton. So again, we think that in this area, we should maintain the integrity of our community with a minimum of five acre tracks, so that we can keep the horse community intact. There are plenty of other subdivisions in Acton, they can have their one and two acres. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bordeaux. Okay, next is Carolyn Reeves.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Reeves, and I live on NUI Road. I'm addressing the Oakwater Ranch additional lots, they have, he has 22 two acre lots that you approved, with the potential of having two houses on each two acre lot, which means there can be 44 houses out there.
I didn't think they could do that.
He has it on there that you can have a second home on the two acre lot. Well, it was, he told me you could, when I called him and asked about the lot, so maybe the paperwork's wrong, but that's what is on there. So maybe we need to clear that also up. So anyway, as my understanding, there could possibly be 44 houses additionally, there's no lines on the roads, it's just very narrow, you have to kinda get off the road to pass each other. So to have 44 more homes out there with families is, it's dangerous. I've already, like, again, said that I got, almost got hit head-on by people just cutting through the corners, there's no lines, no double lines, and there's blind spots. I have a six-year-old daughter who's starting to drive, I'm afraid for her, and so with that... that said, there's mostly five acre lots, anywhere from 300 acres ranches out there. So, to have all these two acre homes is pretty much a development in our country property, grazing ranches. So, I am opposed to this Oakwater Ranch two acre lots. It also puts a strain on our water wells. Is he going to pay for my water well when it goes dry? No, he's going to go, he's not going to be a good neighbor, he's going to develop all these lots and then leave and go to another place. It's all about money for him, it's not about, it's not about the neighborhood. So, I'm, you know, I moved to Granbury, I moved to Hood County, I love it here, but I moved to the country to get away from congestion, not to have a neighborhood right next door to me. I appreciate you listening to me, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning Commissioners, Judge, good to see you all. I am also with the Comanche Peak Coalition, and I did speak to you last meeting. I come to this with a little bit of a different perspective. I mentioned last time I was here that I have lived in this community for nearly 50 years, and I just want to remind the Commissioners that we have a very strong historical committee in Hood County, in Granbury, to preserve the integrity of our town, of our buildings there. That's why I feel like we have been chosen the best small town in Texas for three years. I mean, that's wonderful, but Hood County and Granbury is more than just our town square. We have our beautiful rural areas, we have Comanche Peak, and I feel like we're selling out, that whoever wants to at this time, we're prime picking. People can move in and pay some farmer in Hood County a little bit extra money, more than they thought they'd ever, ever be able to get for their land, and put in developments. And they are doing it to turn a buck. The gentleman that is proposing this Oakwater Ranch, I believe he's doing this in eight different places, and he does have every right to do it. I know that he does. He bought the land, he can do with it what he wants. But I also know that as Commissioners, that you do have the ability to change this outcome a little bit by requiring a minimum of five acres for a water well. It slows things down a little. It's not going to stop growth, and I don't think any of us want to stop growth. Well, some people probably want to stop growth, but in 50 years, I've seen a lot of growth in Hood County, and I know a lot of you have too. So, growth is good, we have a lot of good things because of that, but let's, let's be conscientious of what we're doing here. Let's look at what we can do to preserve some of our rural communities. We don't want to turn into Carrollton. We don't want to be Frisco. We don't want to be driving around going, yeah, but then kids, this used to be some beautiful ranchland. You guys are the only ones that can make a difference by voting to make our five acre lots better. It helps with our water, and it helps with our wildlife, it helps with our roadways. I mean, this is a win-win for everybody. And the Oakwater Ranch fellow here, he's still going to be able to sell some land, heck, I'll help him sell five acre tracts, but not two acres. We're not set up out there to be a neighborhood, a subdivision, and we don't want Hood County to turn into that. But that's where we're headed. And as far as the 44 houses go, there, it does say that, that he reserves the right to do, I think, a 2,500 square foot home and a guest house or mother-in-law quarters.
What are the restrictions?
But that's what it says in his restrictions, that they, because we all read over it. Then we all read it wrong. But anyway, I just implore you to please consider doing what the Upper Trinity Water Group suggested, and increasing the minimum for a water well in Hood County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman. Is that the only person at final to speak on the Oakwater Ranch deal? Now, Mr. Head, would you come back and address what these people have said back at the mic? Let's see if we can.
Can you address it, or could he?
First of all, answer the question about, can we do anything about the two acre versus five acre requirement?
You could, but it'd be for the whole county, and as far as stopping development in the rural areas, the people that want to move to the country and stay in the country. If you don't want to develop, I mean, that sounds rude, but the simple answer is buy it, because unless it's a government-protected property, it's going to get developed, because the simple fact is, matriarchs and patriarchs are passing away and the families are selling them, and they're going to get developed eventually. Now, the five acres, you're pushing the price margin up to where people, you know, somebody, middle-class person's probably not going to be able to afford it, so then you're going to have the realtors mad, you're going to have a lot more people mad than just a couple of neighbors. So, you've got a double-edged sword there, so I don't know that the water factor is that big a deal, because nobody can tell you how much water's down there, that's what the argument was when you were going through this.
You know, I'm not a lawyer, but before I got on the court, before all of us got on the court, this issue came up from the Upper Trinity Groundwater Protection Agency as they tried to implement in their permanent rules going to five acres. And if I remember right, that failed pretty miserably, didn't it, Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner, we, actually, when we first got in here, that, there were proposed rules with the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District to take it to five in Hood County. I think Montague wanted to take it up to 10, and here's the dilemma that you get put into. You've got somebody in one, some part of the county that say got a 10 acre track, and they've got three children, and they want to leave one, one home site for each child. When you take it to five acres, you've just cut one of them out. So, that was just one of the arguments that we heard at that time, and, you know, it's, it becomes a questionable government infringement on private property rights. So, that issue has come up, and it's, you know, at that point in time, it was very heavily argued against when we, when that was up with the Upper Trinity, because I went, I spent a lot of time going up there, actually. So, it's a, it's a delicate issue, and it's, there's, there's a lot of interest to be balanced, and it's, I feel for you, I understand your, your situation, and, and it's a tough, you know, progress is happening, and, you know, the government, it's not the government's place to put restrictions out in rural areas when, when, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of the free market. If people come in and develop something and get the highest use out of that property, that's what they're going to do. So, it's, it's a, it's a tough dilemma, for sure. And that's not on the agenda today, though, to even think about that. That would have to be, we would have to revisit the upper, our situation with the Upper Trinity, so we can certainly look into that.
As far as denying something because of the traffic, the law doesn't give us grounds to deny for the traffic. The streets not being strapped, these aren't city streets, we don't strap county roads, we don't double strap county roads, we don't have parkways. I know that some of these people move here and they're not used to living in rural areas, but that's just, that don't happen in the county. Not being the owner on the plat, the surveyor certifies who the owner is. I check that deed. I don't know if the appraisal district or whether they're getting the information, sometimes the appraisal district hadn't caught up with that, but the surveyor's not going to certify and risk his license to say that's the owner if they're not. So, I'm not sure what they got that from.
The owner certifies, that is the owner of the property on the plat. Excuse me, Commissioners, but I can't say the owner.
I couldn't hear what she says. Have you heard what she said?
She said the owner was not the owner on the plat, but the surveyor certified that...
The owner certified. I'm sorry, I don't mean to waste your time, but I think I need to make it clear what we're trying to do. What I said is, on a plat, the owner certifies that it owns the property and has the right to plat the property. That's up in the upper corner on the back of the plat that I gave you, that you had in your hands, Mr. Cotton. And that entity that filed that plat was Oakwater Ranch. I don't want to belabor anybody with this, but the entity that owns the property is Oakwater Ranch Development LLC. That is a validly existing entity. I am not an attorney, I don't purport to practice law, but I do know how to do some research. The entity that filed the plat was Oakwater Ranch LLC. I'm sure that a surveyor's not going to put his life on, his license on the line, Clint, but it's technically incorrect, and if you follow the letter of the law, things should be correct. Am I wrong?
Well, can you respond to that, Clint, Mr. Head?
It was Oakwater Ranch LLC.
You're going to have to speak, speak into it, please.
It was signed as Oakwater Ranch LLC, and he was acting as the authority signer for LLC.
Right. The distinction is the owner of the property. At that time that plat was created was Oakwater Ranch Development LLC. It may not mean much to other people, but I feel like it gives us a leg to stand on to revisit that plat as well. And I'm just going to take a minute here, we, we understand everything that you're saying. We're saying that, you know, we can't stop progress, you can't make rules that affect everybody else. But here's the deal, the plat today on the agenda, Lots Four, Five, and Six in Block B. That property owner had the house and that land for sale, and he couldn't sell it, so he's replating it. My, our proposal is to deny the plat of Lots Four, Five, and Six in Block B, but go ahead and let the guy replat his property so he can reduce the acreage and sell the home that's existing there. That's, you know, just, we're just trying to keep it country. So, that was the proposal, deny the current plat and require that it be revised to at least six acres.
Okay.
Just, you know, you and I are neither one of the lawyers, but somebody could get sued if we, if we denied a plat.
A plat we don't have grounds for.
And didn't have a law to stand.
So, you're saying it was a Scrivener's error in a signature block?
Well, not to get caught by that, but it potentially, not in the signature block, in the, in the owner's certification. It could have been a Scrivener's error, I'm not saying that it is, but in the certification, it says Oakwater Ranch LLC is the owner of the property and has the right to do this.
What is saying in the signature block? You got it?
Yep. Does on his last one?
And Mr. Cotton, I put the vesting deed into that property there in that packet as well.
The Scrivener's, that's a title company issue, not a county issue.
No.
What did you say?
It's a Scrivener's, that's a title company issue, not a county issue, that's not nothing we govern.
So, what would be the recourse for her, if not the county, to go to the company?
They would have to file an amended plat if a title company threw a curve at it, but that's not something we govern.
Well, we can certainly make sure the title company throws a curve at it, but for now, I mean, today is the discussion, consider the final of Oakwater Ranch, Lots Four, Five, and Six, and our motion is to not approve it as it's currently drafted. Thank you so much.
What are, what are the grounds that you were suggesting we not approve it?
I think as we've all repeatedly said, we want to maintain the integrity of the countryside. Those roads cannot support that amount of traffic. We already get traffic crossing through from 144 to get to Pallexi Highway. It's dangerous, and there's no development. You're going to let this guy make all these plots, and also, by the way, he's selling them to individual, he's selling them to other developers, he's not developing them himself. So, you have no recourse, you have nobody maintaining your roads, it's going to put all the cost on the county. All that maintenance is going to be on the county that he paid taxes for.
Those are existing county roads, he don't have to maintain those roads, those roads are already maintained by the county. Now, if he develops inside that property and has to build roads, then he'll have to do that, and the process will be more in depth. The reason why this is a straight-through process is because he's developing lots on a county road, and they're less than 10 acres, and they're required to be platted. This is a ministerial process that requires it to be platted because it's less than 10 acres, because he's not selling to a family member, and because he's not selling to somebody with a veteran's land board loan. If he was selling to somebody with a veteran's land board loan, we wouldn't be plating it, even if it was two acres, because the law says he don't have to plat it. Now, if he was selling it for agricultural purposes, he wouldn't be in here for having to plat it. He's plating it for ministerial purposes. We have local government code that says our abilities to approve it or not approve it, and then we have our regulations to go by. Traffic is not one of the things the local government code allows us to govern by. That is an existing county road, he don't have to maintain it, he don't have to approve it, because these lots are already there, and all he, he's selling it to people to build houses on. They wouldn't be platted if they were sold to a family member or somebody with a veteran's land board loan.
What is the, what is, excuse me, what is the acreage requirement on septic systems?
With well, it's two acres.
How much?
With, with a well and septic, it's two acres.
So, he's complied with that, that...
He's not building roads, he's, these lots are right on Neri Road without, they're not building additional roads.
No.
There's going to be driveways into these properties. Yeah, I'm still, I'm still struggling with, if we deny it, on what grounds, what legal grounds. The county has to be careful that we're not liable if we deny something that we don't have the right to do. We could be sued by, by that person. Of course, we can't, we can't stop people from suing us, but you need something, I wouldn't have any problem denying it if there was a legal right for the county to deny the plat, but I'm...
So, is that ministerial error on the, on the, as the lady pointed out, grounds to deny till they fix it? Because I haven't had a chance to review the law.
Well, this plat has the right name on it, so I don't know if they filed a different entity, or, or they just, the surveyor messed it up on the last one. The one that was recorded, but this one's got the, the correct, what she's saying on it.
So, the original plat?
It's already recorded.
The one that's already recorded and done, has the wrong name on it?
It left the word development on.
On that one, not this one?
Yeah.
Excuse me, if I may address one more time. So, the restrictions that were filed, I've given to you as well, and this goes to the number of structures that are allowed on the property. So, if you built a 2,500 square foot home and put a guest house, you've got more than one living area with one well.
Well, we can't, we can't do anything about deed restrictions, that's not anything the county can do, that's what, you have to take care of that in civil court or whatever.
But I believe Clint said, one house, two acres, one well, correct?
She's got a permit for a system that fits on that for one structure.
Yeah. Yeah, there are regulations.
She's already issued the permit for one structure and a septic system, so that's all they've got the authority to do, unless they come back and try to get another one.
And this plat, I'm pretty sure, says single-family residences.
So, there's no basis for us to, to deny this guy the right?
I ain't read my presentation yet, but in my presentation, I'll tell you, we have no basis to deny.
Then how do we, how do we make this a public address? Then how do we, how do we make this a public address in the future? Because we're not going to stop.
Legislation.
It's just, we understand. We are, you know, we understand what you're saying. There is no law that can allow you to do that. And so I can see your, on that, I can see that side of it. But on the same side of that coin, we've got to do something now, and this has got to start somewhere.
Well, you have to have some grounds for what you're trying to do.
Well, then I would like to, then I would like to set aside approving this plat until we can get a groundwater study done.
Well, if we table it or set it aside, it's either going to be denied or approved. If you delay it, it's going to get approved.
It's in the favor of the property owner.
That's a dilemma.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
The laws are in favor of the property owner, is to prevent overbearing governments from bullying property owners.
Commissioner Eagle, you know, you mentioned, I think, that's probably the course, would go back to the upper, for a coalition or somebody to get with Upper Trinity if they wanted to relook at that and bring it back to the court to change the acreage rule?
Well, that, you know, that was hashed out pretty heavily three years ago.
I don't know if they'd be willing to do that.
But that's not going to, that's not going to help this situation.
But when's it?
I'm sorry about this, but I think we're just kind of hamstrung, but the law's the law, and we're just going to have to follow the law.
Let me finish my presentation.
Yeah.
This property is located at 2851 Neary Road. This final plat is a road corridor district in Precinct 2 and be creating three lots. The largest lot is 2.75 acres, and the smallest being 2.05 acres. It's out of the Felix C. Catonett Survey, Abstract Number 92. The lots will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. There are no streets proposed to be constructed with this final plat. These lots will access existing county-maintained Neary Road. Staff has reviewed the final plat. All comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval as presented.
You know, sometimes we have to do unpleasant things, but we have to stick to the law, I think, for what I said. So with that being said, we'll see what happens here. I'm going to make the motion to approve the final plat of Oakwater Ranch lots four, five, and six in Block B.
Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the final plat of Oakwater Ranch lots four, five, six, and Block B. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. What else you have, Mr. Head?
A whole bunch of public hearings.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's, okay, at 10:15, let's convene into a public hearing.
This first public hearing is to discuss and consider the replat of Indian Harbor, Phase 4, Lot 66R, and Precinct 1. This replat is the combining of Lot 66 and 67R of Indian Harbor, Phase 4, and proposes to create a 0.25 of an acre lot known as Lot 66R. This property is located in the rural district in Precinct 1 and served by A. Mud Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, and all comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat as presented after you close the public hearing.
Anybody else have any comment? Any discussion? Okay, we're going to convene now at 10:16, back into Commissioners' Court.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Indian Harbor, Phase 4, Lot 66R.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve, made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the replat of the Indian Harbor, Phase 4, Lot 66R. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
The next public hearing we have is of Canyon Creek, Unit 1, Lot 435R, and Precinct 2.
Okay, at 10:17, we're convening into a public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Head.
This replat's combining Lot 435 and 436. Canyon Creek, Unit 1 proposes to create a 0.38 of an acre lot known as 435R. It's located in the rural district in Precinct 2, served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, any further questions? Any comments? We're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court at 10:18. I hear a motion.
Yes, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of Canyon Creek, Lot 1, or Unit 1, Lot 435R.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Andrews, to approve the replat of Canyon Creek, Unit Lot, Unit 1, Lot 435R. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next?
Next we have a replat of South Bend Edition, Lot 7R, and Precinct 3.
Okay, we're convening now into a public hearing at 10:19.
This replat is being done to relocate drainage and utility easements that exceeded the county requirements on the original plat. It proposes to maintain the same 2.51 acres lot that will be known as Lot 7R. This property is located in the water quality district and served by A. Mud Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff has reviewed this plat. There is one comment left outstanding concerning the resizing of the drainage easement. Staff wanted a letter from the engineer stating that it would not affect the drainage that was approved on the engineered construction plans, and have not received that. So staff recommends conditional approval, either pending that letter, or they update or amending their construction plans.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay, we're going to convene at, now at 10:20, back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of South Bend Edition, Lot 7, conditionally, pending on a letter from the developer?
From the engineer.
From the engineer on the effect of the drainage change.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the replat of South Bend Edition, Lot 7R, conditioned upon receiving the proper letter from the developer.
From the engineer.
Engineer. Okay, any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
The next one in South Bend Edition, it's a public hearing for Lot 8R, and Precinct 3.
Okay, at now 10:21, we're going to convene into a public hearing.
This one's a combining of lots eight and nine in South Bend, proposes to create a 3.68, nine acres lot known as Lot 8R. It's located in the water quality district, served by A. Mud Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat. All comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, at 10:22, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of South Bend Edition, Lot 8R.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the replat of the South Bend Edition, Lot 8R. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
And the next one, the last one in South Bend Edition, Lot 39R, and Precinct 3, is a public hearing.
Okay, at 10:22, we're going to convene into a public hearing. At this time, please continue.
This replat is being done to relocate the building lines that exceeded the county requirements on the original plat. It proposes to maintain the same 1.01 acres lot that will be now known as Lot 39R. The property is located in the water quality district, served by A. Mud Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff has reviewed the replat. All comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, at now 10:22, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of South Bend Edition, Lot 39R.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the replat of South Bend Edition, Lot 39R, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any comment or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion again carries four to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Head. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Today you have expenditures in the amount of $1,913,792.16. You've also been given information regarding payments over $10,000. Are any questions on any of these expenditures?
Any questions, comments?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the expenditures of $1,913,792.16.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $1,913,792.16, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
The next item you have are the monthly reports. You've all been given copies of the monthly reports for August. The only one missing is the district clerk. There's still some issues with, some problems from Senate Bill 41, and she is working on that. But other than that, I ask that you approve the ones that you've received.
Okay. Any comment, or do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I move that we approve the financial reports as noted.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the financial reports, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five, four, zero.
The next item we have is the annual financial review of the library. There was, we just had one issue, and we have discussed that with Jennifer, and she's going to put this in place. They need a dual control, and they need to deposit their money weekly that comes from their self-service copy machine. Very minor, and she's going to make that correction. So we ask that you accept that audit report.
Okay.
Judge, I'll make the motion to accept the 2022 review of the Hood County Library financial reports.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the 2022 review of the Hood County Library financial records, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all opposed? Same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
The next review is for the environmental health financial records. Again, just a small issue. We ask that they purchase a pre-numbered receipt book, and when they fill this out, they make sure they put the person that accepts the money and pays the money. Talked with Jeannie about it. No issues there, it will be done.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to acknowledge and accept the 2022, 2022 review of environmental health financial records.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Eagle to accept the 2022 review of the environmental health financial records, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Okay. Next?
Number five. We had requested that Hood County Constable Precinct 2 reimburse us $178.53 for the unused portion of travel expenses during his JPCA annual education conference. Mr. Shirley paid that yesterday.
So that's moot at this point, then?
It shouldn't have to go on the agenda. You have five days to clean up your travel. You either request the money that's owed to you, or you pay it back.
So what caused the delay?
It did not get paid until, he was requested twice, and it did not get paid until yesterday. But that's what county policy says. You've got to clean your travel up. You need to take care of it, get your money paid back.
When did he pay it, this last?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, well, it's moot at this point, isn't it not? I mean, I guess we could just tell everybody, you better get it paid before Wednesday.
It's county policy. It's county policy.
Yeah, it's Hood County policy, and follow the Hood County policy.
We don't need to take any action if it's unpaid.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go to miscellaneous item number one. A discussion to take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program year 2023 for the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for Hood County Senior Center. And the head of Hood County Senior Center, sir, is Jeanette Scott, who does the fabulous job there, and everybody will agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
And you have handed all of us a deal, so give us some more bad news now, okay?
Well, I did a little review of the numbers that we've been serving. Our Meals on Wheels have, we've reached the peak that we've ever served. Every month, we're kind of exceeding a record that we've, you know, every month is exceeding the month before. So we are applying for the Texas Feeding Texans grant to help recoup the cost of the home-delivered meals. One of the things that's happened this year, we not only have more people requesting our services, but the cost of food is increasing. So I've got a graph for you there that just shows, basically, since the last year, the cost of food, it goes up about 46 percent. And it's different depending on if it's meat or vegetables. We're having to juggle our menu because there are shortages in items that we try to order. We've already been notified that turkeys are going to be hard to find for Thanksgiving. The avian flu wiped out a lot of the turkey industry. So things like that, we just have to make adjustments with our menus and make sure that the people that are homebound seniors do get nice meals, healthy meals, and we're just doing our best with the resources we have.
It's a shame that everything is just, it's a perfect storm. You've got shortages, you've got high costs, no money, everything else, but you do an excellent job, and everybody that's gone down there, and the volunteers that, that you have, they're so good about doing this. I've done it myself. It's a eye-waking experience to deliver Meals on Wheels, I'll tell you that for sure. So if anybody ever feels sorry for themselves, go deliver Wheels on Meals, and you'll feel better pretty quickly. So we do have, we have signed something in here. I think I've already signed it. Where did I put that?
Yeah, you signed it.
I've signed it, didn't I? We all signed it, where we've given you a grant for $50,000.
Yes.
Which is what we did, and we have signed that. Or, let me make a motion. I make a motion that we sign the grant authorizing the $50,000 to Meals on Wheels from the state. Let me see if I can find this.
I'll second that.
Yeah, the Texas Department of Agriculture here. Yeah. Well, I guess it's only me that I need to sign it here, so. I make a motion that I be allowed to sign the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Feeding Texans Home Delivered Grant Program.
I'll second that.
And second by Commissioner Cotton. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero, though. But thank you very much. Maybe it'd be something that we could do throughout the year. I know I'm certainly behind your program. Maybe we will find some additional monies, or maybe get, since Jack Wilson's not here to get him to donate a raffle, we'll have a raffle to create some more money or something. Okay?
Thank you.
But thank you for all you do. And meals, by the way, you can go up there and eat up there. They're really good. They're nutritionists, and they're good, and you do a great job. And all those people up there are happy.
They are.
They're very happy, and the food is good, and I wish you could get a bigger kitchen.
Yes. We need that.
If anybody knows where we can pick up a good kitchen at a good cost, please let us know, right?
Right.
Well, thank, thank... Well, thank, thank you very much, Jeanette, for all that you do, okay?
Thank you.
All right. The second item up here, our elections administrator, Ms. Stephanie Cooper here, is going to come up here and discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the notice of general election. Good morning, Ms. Cooper.
Good morning. This is just a standard thing you do before every election. This is just the notice that's going to get published in the paper, and it'll be posted on our website as well. It addresses all of the polling locations, and then the hours for early voting.
Okay. And you've got all the different places listed, and all the hours of operation, and all this conforms to law. So what we want here is, do I hear a motion to approve the notice of the general election as prepared by and submitted by Ms. Stephanie Cooper? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to, as stated, to authorize you to sign the notice of the general election, Judge.
Okay, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously four zero. Here I'm signing it, and you can come pick it up if you want it. Ah, well, I, I guess you're going to have to hand it to Ms. Lang first to get her to record it, and then you can get it. But there it is, okay? Thank you very much. All right. The next item is three, and here is our Chief Field Marshal, Fire Marshal Jeff Young, to consider and take appropriate action regarding the 2023 interlocal agreements with all nine volunteer fire departments. Jeff Young.
Judge, Commissioners, I'm excited, my title grows every time I come up here. Basically, I've got the, the nine interlocal agreements. It's an annual agreement that we have with the volunteer fire departments. I believe all of y'all got a copy of that in advance. Ms. Kidd was happy with the amendments that we made to it this year. So that's all I got to say about that.
And I think that it's $95,000 for each volunteer fire department, and everything's...
Yes, sir, with the exception of Granberries. Granberries is 80 because we've not paid for their maintenance and fuel in the past. So that may be something we need to revisit next year, because I don't, I think their maintenance procedures have changed as well, so. By the time that was brought to my attention this year, it was too late to make any changes to it, so.
Okay. I want to say one other thing. Our volunteer fire departments, during this fire ban that we had in this ultra-dry summer, they all did fabulous work. They were there 24/7, and really, our volunteer fire departments are really something to be proud of.
We worked them hard this season.
If you can see a volunteer fire department, just like all first responders, if you see a volunteer fireman, I mean, give them your thanks, because they kept this county from burning up. I mean, they really did. So they did a great job, and you do a great job, so thank you all very much.
On their behalf, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. The next item is pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.
I think we need to make a...
Were we supposed to vote on that in time?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to be like a blistering man around.
I just get carried away. I mean, you just, I'm so used to approving your stuff up here. Do I hear appropriate motion at this point?
Judge, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022, 2023 interlocal agreements with all nine volunteer fire departments.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the 2022, 2023 interlocal agreements with all nine volunteer fire departments. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously four to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, item number four. Says pursuant to Government Code 551.074, convening to executive session to discuss and take appropriate action regarding reimbursement of legal fees paid by an assistant district attorney to successfully defend said attorney's law license against claims arising out of that attorney's performance of authorized employment-related duties. So at this time, we're going to take a break at 24 minutes till 11:00 and go into executive session, and at the same time while we're down there, we're going to, I guess, stay in there and get, take the next one into the item number five, which is convening to executive session to consult with an attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located in Precinct Four. Okay. Thank you all very much. At this time, we're recessed into executive session. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 11:24, and I'm on a, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. After bidding in executive session and discussing item number four about taking action regarding reimbursement of legal fees for an assistant DA, which was defending that attorney's law license against employment-related duties, do I hear a motion from one of the Commissioners here?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make that motion to approve $6,000 to reimburse Assistant District Attorney for legal fees involved in defending that ADA's license.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, to authorize the reimbursement of legal fees paid by an assistant DA to defend her, a law license arising out of that attorney's performance in her authorized employment-related duties. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Becky, where would you find this money, Becky?
Probably out of general administration attorney fees, and I'll pay it out of new budget since it's so late in the year. I just need an invoice.
So you need an invoice from the DA?
Well, we can supply that to you.
Yeah, we'll take it.
You can do necessary. Okay. So with that amendment about where it's coming from, then, is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero unanimously. All right. Item number five, we do not need to vote on. So that brings us to item number six, consider and take appropriate action to set a date for a public hearing regarding the designation of approximately 4,078.22 acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone under Texas Tax Code 312.401 for Yellow Viking II Solar Project. Is that yours?
Yes, that is. We, of course, we have to put that in the paper, run it for seven days, and Clint Head is going to put that in the paper. And this is a, we have to create the reinvestment zone. The, the solar panels won't be that, be that large. I think it's around 2,000 acres. But because of this area, it's full of sand pits and everything, you're not going to be able to use every bit of the acreage to put solar plants on, but they do need to establish the area that those solar panels will be put on. So this is just designating the area down in southeast Hood County, clear down to the border of Johnson County. And so this is just creating the, the reinvestment zone so we can go forward with a potential abatement on solar panels, about 2,000 acres of them. So I think that's it, and I guess I will make the motion to set a public hearing regarding the designation of approximately 4,078.22 acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone under Texas Tax Code 312401 for Yellow Viking II Solar Project. That date being the Commissioners' Court on October 11th.
Did you fill out a public...
Okay.
So before I run this thing, can I?
Sure. You bet.
Yes, Tina Brown, you did.
Yes, so...
You said you didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't know.
You didn't know whether you were for or against it, so.
I know, there's not enough information here. So I did speak with somebody during the break, and this is, some of my questions were answered. So this is really, we're just setting a public hearing?
Yes.
So then, I guess I could maybe get with you, and maybe get some of your information about pros and cons of this, and maybe have questions at the open hearing.
Sure. Call me, come see me, I'll be more than happy to discuss what the issue is.
Okay.
You could even ask these questions now if you want, it's...
Well, I mean, okay, so understand that this is in the same area as the one that you agreed on last year, I guess?
Yes, same company.
But it, but that company hadn't even started.
No.
So we don't even know about the pros of this company doing this, because we haven't, we haven't gotten any pros from it yet, right?
No. That will, that will, what we're doing now is just creating a reinvestment zone so that we can look into doing just what you're saying, is looking into whether or not we will approve an abatement for about 2,000 acres of solar panels. We've already approved an abatement for 500 acres in that same area. Now they've went out and leased some more property.
I understand that, but you, so, but before you increase it, we don't even have any pros from what you already agreed to, so.
Yeah, one thing we're...
Because they hadn't started yet.
Oh, they, no, we haven't agreed to anything. All we're doing is setting a public hearing, so we...
No, the 500 acres that you already approved.
We approved that.
But it hasn't, it hasn't given Hood County any pros yet.
No, it doesn't. They're not even going to start the construction until the first quarter of 2023.
Okay, so that is, I mean, we're, we're going to go ahead and approve more when we don't even know if that one is going to work in our favor. That's right?
I don't know what you mean by that. I mean...
Well, the first one that you approved hasn't worked in our favor at all yet.
They just haven't started it.
I know. So, but, so how do we know we want to expand on it, because that one hasn't helped us at all?
Because this land is worthless to not use for anything else you could...
It's going to be ad valorem tax to the county.
Okay.
That's what it's going to do for, it's just going to be taxes for it.
I know, but you know what? People thought windmills were great, too, but now we find out they're not. So, I mean, I, looking at a field of solar panels...
Yeah, probably going to give some...
I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know enough about it, so, but yeah, I will do some more info, research, and get back with you, and I'll have comments when the public hearing is.
Yep, we'll have a public hearing, so you can speak at that, too, on October 11th.
This, October 11th?
Uh-huh. That'll be the next, next Commissioners' Court.
I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be out of town.
Well, you better send a representative.
You are going to miss me, aren't you?
Again, all we're, all I'm doing now is setting a public hearing so we can discuss the reinvestment zone.
Okay, so the public, you're going to set the public hearing at the next...
Yes, if, if they agree to it. I have made a motion, we'll see if the court will agree to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
What does it have to be? Do we need a date? How long does it have to be in the newspaper?
It's got to run for seven days. Good for you. And he'll put it in this Saturday. So I, my motion is to set the public hearing for October the 11th at the Commissioners' Court.
Okay. And Clint Head's going to put the required notice in the paper, right?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to set a date for a public hearing regarding the designation of the 4,078.22 acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously four zero. Okay. Item number seven, Ms. Stacks. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the Hood County Collection Station holidays scheduled to coincide with the already-approved county holidays, and request the Citizens' Collection Station to be closed the following holidays, November 26, 2022, December 24, 2022, April 8, and July 1, 2023. Jeannie Stacks.
Yes, sir. This is the November, December, and April, or the Saturday after a Friday holiday we already have. Since Saturday is the scheduled day, the collection station will require to be open, and July 1 is the first Saturday before the holiday, so I was requesting all four Saturdays that we be closed at the Citizens' Collection Station.
Okay. Do I hear appropriate motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the holidays, as I have just stated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously four zero. Thank you very much. Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding Stephen Miller's request for the appointment of Damon Kumba and the reappointment of Pat Bergman to the Board of Directors of the Hood County Development District Number One. I know that Commissioner Wilson just wanted to put this on up here, but I've read what he said in there. Does anybody have any question about what Stephen Miller has requested? I don't think...
I think they just have to, uh...
Make a motion to approve his request?
I'll make that motion to approve the request from Mr. Stephen Miller to appoint, the appointment of David Kumba and to reappointment of Pat Bergman to the Board of Directors of Hood County Development District Number One.
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Andrews. A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the request of Stephen Miller to the appointment of Damon Kumba and the reappointment of Pat Bergman to the Board of Directors of the Hood County Development District Number One, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously four zero. Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the transfer of $2,600 from Fund 61 abandoned vehicle into road operations after October 1, 2022, and allow road operations to put down the material in the east impound lot on the east side of the jail. Sheriff.
Judge, Commissioners, the impound lot that I have is getting overcrowded with vehicles, equipment, and all kinds of stuff, and on the east side of the building, there is another lot that we have used on occasion, and then we had some rain, and it was getting real soft out there, so the wreckers didn't want to put anything out there and have, get stuck or anything like that. So I'm coming before you now that this Fund 61 is my abandoned vehicle fund. I'll transfer from there to Road Ops into their material fund, and off the top of my head, I didn't know what that was, $2,600, and that's based on a figure that Donald's people came out and looked at. A 150-foot-by-50-foot-wide section was going to cost 850 bucks, something like that, to, to do the, just for the material. So this is going to cover three sections, 150-foot-by-150-foot, basically. So I ask for you to allow me to transfer that money and buy the material, and allow also for Road Ops to be able to put that down.
Okay.
Since it is on county property, so.
Okay. Do I hear appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make that motion to transfer $2,600 from Fund 61 into Road Ops after October 1, 2022, to allow Road Ops to put down material, spread it out, and whatever else is needed, the east impound lot on the east side of the jail.
Second.
Second by Commissioner. All right, motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the transfer of the $2,600 from Fund 61 abandoned vehicle operation into Road Ops after October 1, 2022, and allow Road Ops to put down the material in the east impound lot on the east side of the jail, second by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four zero unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item number 10, discuss and consider the revisions to the Hood County Interpretation Pay Policy. H.R., Ms. Melissa Welburn.
Good morning. These two policies were revised to accommodate what was passed and, or approved during the budget process regarding certification pay. You all received a copy in advance. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but it was pretty much just correcting the policy to accommodate the changes.
Yeah. I read both of them. They're redlined to show what changes...
That was the verbiage that was removed, and then the highlighted portion is what was added or changed, revised.
So do I hear a motion on item number 10 to, to go ahead and allow the revisions to the Hood County Interpretation Pay Policy?
I'll make that motion, Judge.
Motion been made by...
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, to allow the revisions as stated in our packet and been approved by, and as stated... as stated in our packet and been approved by, and as stated in the documents in our packet here, to the Hood County Interpretation Pay Policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, discuss and consider revisions to the Hood County Certification and Specialty Pay Policy. Again, the same thing.
That's correct. Same thing, yes.
Same thing.
Both policies were affected by the changes in the budget.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the revisions to the Hood County Certification and Specialty Pay Policy as previously approved and is contained in the documentation, second by both Commissioner Eagle and Commissioner Andrews then. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 12, consider and take appropriate action to repair reserve vehicle for Constable Precinct Four. The illustrious Scott London.
So this is the vehicle I believe Chad was actually talking to y'all about at the last meeting. We were, been trying to milk it along to where we can get our new vehicles that we've been trying to get for a year and a half now. The transmission has gone out on it and that's Unit 403. This is the vehicle that we were intending to donate to Constable Precinct Two. So we have a few options on the table. Unit 401, the engine was blown several months back and it was about $7,000 to fix the engine on 401. So for Unit 403 with the blown transmission, might have said that they could take the transmission out of 401 and put it in 403 for about $1,600. Or Thomas Meyer said they could give us a brand-new transmission for about $5,000. Then I believe there was also an estimate, no?
Never got it.
Never got it. Okay. They were talking about doing a rebuilt transmission around $4,000. But so the options that we currently have is, you know, a new motor for seven grand, swapping transmissions for a little over $1,600, or a brand-new transmission for about $5,000.
We're supposed to be getting a bunch of new vehicles in here.
They'll be building the 2024s here in about another 12 months.
They'll get here in 2028, I guess.
Yeah. The, the last I heard, the, the vehicles were scheduled to be finished last week. Now we're being told maybe end of October, first of November.
And this vehicle is still going to serve as a reserve?
We, we were planning on still utilizing this vehicle as a reserve vehicle. But at the moment, Chad and I have one vehicle. Chad's been driving his personal truck to work because, well, we're, we're down to one unit.
Yep. Vehicles are...
Have to come by.
They are.
Being built doesn't mean that it'll be here...
Correct. Because even, once it's built, then, then they still have to ship them here. We have to have them outfitted. I mean, it's, you know...
Yeah, there's, there's considerable life on it.
Correct.
Well, since we got, we know we already got the used transmission. All they have to do is take it out for $1,600. As far as you know, the transmission in 401 is all right then, right?
Correct. It was, the engine was what went out on 401.
Yeah, so if we could do that for $1,600, maybe we could limp along for a while. Hope you don't get any high-speed chases. Okay?
That's just going as a backup and you're going to give that to...
Ultimately, that's going to be a, a reserve vehicle for, for Precinct Two. But for right now, we're, we're hoping to get them swapped so that we can function until the new vehicles are...
Gotcha.
I move that we try the $1,600, just take the transmission out of 401 and put, put it in 403. How about that? That's what I moved...
I'll second.
Second. All right. Motion's made by a county judge to take the transmission out of 403 and put it into 401. Is that right? Oh, just the opposite?
Opposite.
Yeah. Okay. Out of 401, put it in 403.
Make sure you protect that catalytic converter too. We don't want somebody stealing that while you're doing the work.
Yeah, don't let it cop in there. Second by Commissioner Eagle, though. Any further discussion?
Yes. Where's the money coming from, sir?
I'm sorry?
Fund 55.
Out of your checking account, Ms. Kidd.
Well, you're getting a look.
If you say that, how about 55? If you say that, she will find the money. Where do you find the money, Ms. Kidd? Where? You will be able to find $1,600. Look at that. Thank you, Glenn Tillman, for covering up that nasty remark. Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously four to zero.
Capital Projects?
Okay. Next, consider and take appropriate action to approve Hood County Constable and Sheriff fees and commissions for 2023 under Local Government Code 118.131. Yes, sir.
So it's, I, I'm not sure how long it's been since we've revised our fees, but I'm told that it's something that the Commissioners Court has to do before we can actually start charging new fees. And essentially, as the Constable's office, the vast majority of what we do is, is civil. And so this is essentially passing those costs along to the litigants rather than to the taxpayers. All the fees proposed are in line with our, our surrounding counties. In some cases, we are still a little bit lower, but in no case are we higher than our surrounding counties. So we're still, you know, not, not gouging our, our customers too much, if you will. And so you have the figures if you have any questions. I know that had these fees been in place this year, that would have been about an extra $68,000 in revenue that we would have gained through charging those fees along to the litigants.
Are all the, are all these cost increases passed along to the litigants?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, that's, that's what we're doing. We're, we're passing it along to the customers that are coming to our doors asking for us[1690.32]